Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am, I am not going to turn my computer on, or sorry, I have my computer on. I'm not turning my camera on because my husband's doing an interview right now on Zoom as well. And if we have two cameras and audio at the same time, it will all kind of shut down. So.
No, no worries. Um, I need to step away for just a second. I see Kayla's joining us. I'm not sure if Commissioner Glenn is going to join us. I think our HR is joining us. So just give us another minute or two.
No problem.
Thank you, Kristy.
All right.
All right. Good morning. I don't know that anybody else is going to join us today, so I think we can just go ahead and get started. Um, so I know that we've had some conversations before around county management structure, but I'll turn it over to Sarah, because I think you and Kristy had set this up, and I don't know if you have a specific agenda that you'd like to, to discuss. Maybe the funding piece from DOLA, and then just kind of the, the operational norm when you go into this management type of style of, of governance.
Uh, I think you've got it. And yeah, I think, I think the big thing, well, a little bit of background. I mean, we've had this, this conversation, like you said, with elected officials and directors. I think this is something that clearly, in my experience in this position, and I think Commissioner Marcella's time in the position of commissioner, it's something that has been a stuck out like a sore thumb as a gap in both service to the organization. And now, I think thankfully, you know, we've, we've actually gotten some quantified feedback from the community through our business advocates in the recovery subgroups of, for the COVID event, identifying and acknowledging a gap there. Part of that, if I need to kind of explain what that means, is, you know, the, the challenge, I think, for any managing commissioners, and I don't, I don't know if Kristy has this off the top of her head as statistic, but I, I'm not sure that there are many counties that have managing commissioners still. But it's, it's really challenging to, to stay high level and look at policy and have regional statewide partnerships. When you're also, you know, and implement that policy with your staff and departments, while you're also trying to manage and navigate personnel issues and some of those internal things. It really creates a discrepancy, or I guess a conflict in, in that dynamic and those relationships that really doesn't seem to do anybody any good, in my opinion. And so I think after having, I definitely, I reached out to Kristy soon after, hey, hey babe, I'm, I'm unmuted and speaking. Thank you. Um, I reached out to Kristy after we had gotten our first report out from Chad Most at the Main Street, um, program for the business advocates. We, there are business advocates who are going out and soliciting feedback through surveys and entering that on a, on a, on a sheet with the EDC and the Main Street. And so it seemed that, you know, there was overwhelming response acknowledging this, again, as I said, and there is an opportunity from DOLA to get some funding support to put, create this position and hire for it. And I think we, I am eager to make that determination to move forward as a board. And so whatever else we can learn from you, Kristy, and understand on that timeline would be great.
Excellent. Okay. Well, I can just, I can fill in some of the technical gaps and then we can have a conversation about what you all might need then moving forward. So as far as the number of counties that are still working with like managing commissioners, I don't know statewide. There's one other county in my region, and that's Custer County, that doesn't work with a county manager. But all of the others I'm in my region do have a county manager, or at least that position, even if it's vacant at the moment. Um, so, uh, yeah, I think that, um, more counties are moving um, to having that professional manager, having that position. COVID aside, issues are getting more complicated. It's harder to keep up with rules and policy that comes from the state and the feds. And keeping an organization moving forward is obviously a full-time job. And there is that policy level work that elected officials should be doing, thinking long-term, thinking big picture, thinking broadly. And then there's the implementation work. And that is an administrator's job. It's your department head's job to, to implement that policy that you all identify. And so having those two layers of, of individuals working in simultaneously to move things forward, you know, is, is an ideal situation. So because it's hard to get it all done. You can't be thinking big, big picture to move your community forward. And it, or it's hard to think big picture and then also think about how, how you need to implement it. So I think more and more counties, if they have the capacity, are moving, and municipalities are moving towards that structure of having professional management in place to guide the future. Um, so DOLA does fund managers in communities that haven't had a manager before. I know you all have had managers in the past. I confirmed that it's been long enough that we can say we're starting over with Lake County. Um, so I'm, we have, uh, so we generally have three application deadlines every fiscal year. It would have been August 1st, then December 1st, then April 1st. And our funding is about half of what we normally have. So we have cut our application deadlines down to two. So our next application deadline will be October 1st. And, um, the way our manager grants work on is, it's a three-year commitment. Um, it ends up being a 50/50 match. The first year, DOLA pays 75% and the county pays 25. The second year is 50/50, and the third year is 25% DOLA, 75% county. So this gives you an opportunity to, um, you know, look at your budget, the manager in place can begin identifying. Um, I might have to go inside because now somebody's going to start mowing their lawn.
That's okay. We can hear you.
Okay. So, um, you know, it gives the organization a, a chance to understand really what the position is about. The position can kind of establish itself and hopefully identify places where they can, you know, start funding themselves. What we do ask in this process is that I'm involved in helping you guys through the interview process. I'm working with you in whatever way I can to, to help with the job description. And then really, before we get into the actual grant is thinking about what it would look like in year four for you all to fund the position yourselves, because we don't want this to be a three-year, you get help from the state, and then in year four, the position goes away. It, it should be a long-term. Um, it should be a long-term position. Um, so anyhow, that, that's kind of where, that's where we stand with it. Um, on the DOLA side. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have specific DOLA technical questions that I can answer.
Well, it sounds like I just, just to mention to that long-term planning, it sounds like, um, you know, with, I know Commissioner Marcel has looked into, and we've talked to some neighboring counties about budget methods and, and approach and priority-based budgeting. So I think that I, you know, in, in that long-term sustainable planning piece, I, I would very much like to incorporate. And I think we need to incorporate that. So I, I'm glad that that would be part of kind of the, the engagement with DOLA and part of, of the planning and organizing that we, we put in place on the onset.
I agree. I think that, um, you know, Kristy, I, it makes me much more comfortable to, to, to talk about this and think about this. Knowing that we'll have so much DOLA support going through this for the first time, because it's going to be such a huge shift in direction for our organization. And so I, I think in the past, the way that this has failed is that that position has not been given the authority to do and act in the, in the way that it really needs to, to be successful. And so that's going to be a huge shift for us in our organization. And so I think having you available for, for that hiring process and interview process. And really that startup process of how this is going to drive our organization will be really helpful. Lori, I see your hand up. Um, do you, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, you know, I, the attempt with Lake County was prior to my coming on board. And I know that it was a struggle. Kayla, you just touched on it a little bit. My question is for Kristy. If, for whatever reason, during the recruitment and selection and onboarding process, the candidate that we ultimately choose and hire on doesn't work out for whatever reason, and we have to start over again, does that restart that three-year clock? Or is it a continuation of that three-year clock?
Uh, we don't start over. Um, so if you hire someone and let's say they're on board for three months, we don't add three months' worth of wages back in. You would, um, we basically stop the clock. Um, are we still on? Oh, yeah. Hi, okay. My computer, my screen changed. It, I thought we had lost it. I'm sorry. Um, so, um, we stopped the clock so that we could start the process of interviewing, interviewing and hiring someone else. Um, but then that second hire would have, you know, two years and nine months worth of, you know, DOLA assistance. It wouldn't, we wouldn't start the three years over if you hired someone else. Does that?
I think, yeah, that makes sense. I would imagine though, that we would want to take this through a process where the, the candidate pool that we're recruiting from or selecting from is highly qualified and experienced to be able to do this work and, and kind of be a self-starter in this position. I, is that kind of your experience, Kristy, that?
So I've had, I've had different experiences with this, and we have, um, kind of massaged the program a little bit based on some experiences that we've had. So a lot of times, you know, communities who are just starting out in the manager process, to be quite honest with you, don't want to pay what needs to be paid for someone with experience and the self-starter mentality. Um, so in some cases, unfortunately, the salaries were set kind of low, which meant that maybe they didn't get a candidate that had government experience. So I have worked with a couple of communities that have had to start over a couple of times hiring a manager. Unfortunately, um, there have been cases where they had such a bad experience with the person that they hired that they gave all of the money back and decided not to do, go down the management path. I think part of that is an organizational, um, understanding of what it means to have a manager for you as elected officials to know. Um, and accept basically that your role is as a, an elected official, as a policymaker, and not as an implementer. Um, it is for your department heads and others within the organization to understand um, a new organizational structure and to have you as commissioners, um, um, kind of carry that flag, right? That this is the organizational structure, this is your supervisor, this is how we have set this position up. And so a part of it is kind of a, um, like a psychological test for you all to understand this is the decision that we're making for our organization. And this is how, you know, we are going to support it as we move forward. So, um, some of it isn't necessarily the person's fault that gets hired. It's the organization that wasn't really as ready as they thought they were to, to do it.
And I think, from my experience, I think that, um, that probably was the biggest failure in the past, is that the organization itself wasn't ready to commit politically to what that role looked like. So the board was not able to, to relinquish control to that individual to full, to do their job to the, to the full capacity and full expectation of what that role was expected to do. And so it, it led to some confusion within the organization, and I think that was the biggest failure.
Yeah. And Lori, I see your comment there. I mean, I think that's where the organization needs to decide that they're willing to pay for a professional who does understand what it means to move to a community. You know, maybe it's important for this group, um, to, you know, uh, think about candidates who are not from warm states. I have no idea. But I think that, you know, it, it is about hiring a professional, someone who's, who understands what it means to be in a different community. Maybe this isn't their first county manager job, you know? So for the organization to dig in and understand how much are you willing to literally pay for this to be successful. And I think that there are ways that you can um, manage the salary side of it and, and get what you need. But that, I think, is a really big discussion. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I, I thank you. I, I'm sorry. I put, my internet is unstable apparently. So if I get kicked off, I will return as soon as I can. But I think that, uh, you know, all those concerns about hiring and qualify, you know, that's, that's a problem we don't have yet. And I appreciate that, but I think that we've, um, you know, to, to your credit, Lori, too, we've improved some of the recruitment, and I've seen that in a lot of my departments and some critical pieces where it's, it's just a constant need to address some insubordination and, and just, you know, settling for folks. And I do not think that, you know, with, with the current board and leadership and, and HR, I don't, I, I feel really confident that that is not going to happen. And that our standards will be as high as they can be, and will match the budget to, to the best we can to meet those expectations. And, and I really feel like we've learned a lot through the last few years to be able to and had the conversations internally to kind of prime, to prime the organization for this a bit better than maybe has been done in the past.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, you know, the, the way that we can communicate this out is just exactly how Kristy has, has been talking about it, you know? Our role is to develop policy and develop an expectation. And then that administrator or manager's role is to take that policy and expectation and translate the what into the how it's going to be accomplished, and then delegate that out to the respective parties that, that need to accomplish those tasks. And so I think it, it will add to, um, you know, our ability to maintain transparency so that, you know, we're not down in the weeds managing the day-to-day. It will give us the ability to have, you know, additional separation of duties between boards and directors. And so I think it's, it's important for us and, and continuity of operations, right? I think Lake County has a repu- reputation of having to start over a lot when there's a, a change in elected officials. And I think that that's important for us to overcome right now, so that we have, we have so many big projects in the queue that in order to continue with that progress, we're going to have to have, have somebody to continue those.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's key to, to not forget. Kayla, thank you for, for mentioning that, because I think it's, it's constantly been like this two steps forward, one step back. And in, in the world especially of, I mean, I mean, we want projects to be completed, to be successful, to be very strategic. You know, I've been reading revisions of strategic plans for bigger organizations, state organizations, and it is all really better and more explicitly lying out that comprehensive planning element. And so that you're not there, you know, we're not, we're not, they're not awarding funds for one-off projects. And it is this thought-out kind of longer-term commitment, as much as you can make as a board for the future. So I, I greatly appreciate that. I think it'll help in how we approach things as an organization, and it'll improve our relationships regionally and statewide as well.
So I wasn't able to attend the after-action review, but I had heard that this had come up through that, that process with the pandemic, that it would be of some assistance. Did you, you attended that, correct, Sarah?
I did. Um, it was hard for me to hear everything, but that was one of the first things that was brought up. Was identifying some of those gaps in, in staffing and, uh, which, which, as I kind of mentioned before at the beginning of the meeting, which led to kind of an inability or certainly ongoing challenges in response to time and communication and appropriate, you know, authority or role-playing.
Yeah, I think, um, I think through the pandemic situation, you know, our, our role as the board was much more actionable than policy-driven, because we were trying to handle both making the policy and executing the policy through the pandemic. And so I think, I think having that separation and having that step of, of management where that management says, okay, board, you need to make this decision, and here's what this decision will, here's the fallout from this decision, here's the fallout from this decision, and here's the fallout from this decision, and how do you want this to happen? I think that that would be critical.
Even just for you all, having one person that you can funnel things to, and that they can see, you know, the broader and overall picture of what's going on, because it can be, you know, easy, I'm putting easy in quotes, because none of it's easy, right? But it can be, uh, it's easy for you all as elected officials to kind of fall into, this is what you need to be working on, this is your thing. And so you're going down your paths. And, and if you have someone that's helping you coordinate all of the efforts that you have going on, um, you know, whether you're making the right or wrong decision isn't necessarily the point. It's more that you have all of the information that you need to make the decision. That makes sense.
Yeah, I think, and I think it, what you're talking about is being able to do that more effectively and more efficiently. Because right now, it takes us so long to get to a point where we feel comfortable as a board making a decision, because we have to chase down information, because it could include this department director and this department director, but we're overseeing different, those departments. It's not the same commissioner overseeing those departments. And, and so we have to figure out a way to gather that information, and it, it really is not effective or efficient for us as an organization.
Right, right.
So Kristy, when, when we talk about getting into the grant cycle for this, you said the, the deadline is October 1st. Do you, is that application in the grants portal, or what's the process? When do you find out you're awarded? And then after, after you're potentially awarded, then what's the timeline?
Sure. So, um, it depends on how much you are requesting from us. So it'll depend on salary. So if your request is for less than $200,000, um, I believe that, um, the October 1st, October, November, we might be reviewing tier-one applications in mid-December. I don't have the schedule in front, I'm not 100% sure. Um, you would be awarded right after the first of the year. Um, you know, it takes about four weeks to get under con, four to six weeks to get under contract. So, um, but in the interim, um, we could be working on the job description. We could be working on how the recruiting process would lay out. Uh, once you're, once you have the award letter, you could start the hiring process, because it'll take time, right? You'll want to have the announcement out for, you know, X number of days or weeks. Make sure that you're hitting all of the key points, you know, whatever Lori's process looks like, or however, um, we can do the recruiting. And then by the time you're under contract, then you've gone through that, um, interview and, and hiring process so that that person could start, you know, I would, I don't know. Um, let's see, I don't, March, probably. I don't know, Lori. I don't know, Lori, Lori's the HR person, so she would know kind of how long things would take. But if you knew you were awarded in the early part of January of 2021, maybe April? I'm not 100% sure, but that would be the approximate timeline.
So I'm sorry, Christie, the, the award would come in January?
Yeah, yep.
Oh, okay, for a October 1 application?
Correct.
Okay.
So yes, Kayla, it's the normal process. I'm for sure it's, uh, it would be through the grant portal. You'd apply that way. You'd be competing against projects across the state. We'll have $15 million available on October 1st.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I can, uh, I can connect with you on that grant application and get that started then.
Yes, we are in the process. You all should have received notice from me that we're in the process of updating our, um, impact guidelines. It doesn't affect this, what we're talking about right now, but, uh, we're waiting for those to be, um, approved by the Impact Advisory Committee, um, in case there were any changes to the application. And the application will probably be live in the portal September 1st. But I don't anticipate any huge changes. You can look at the Word documents that's on our website and start filling it out so that you have an idea, you know, you can just start putting your, putting your thoughts together on that.
But Christie? The, this is Denise. The Word doc is no longer on the website. I believe they were maybe going to make some minor modifications to it and that is why it is no longer on there. There's not even a PDF version, so we won't have access to see everything in there until September 1st.
Okay, thank you for that. I haven't checked the website. I, I keep hoping along thinking that it's in there, so, but we can still work on that. I think that, you know, one of the discussions that you all need to have, unless you've had it already, is what, what's your salary point? Um, what are you guys looking at here for salary and benefits? What's the package look like so that you can think about the, the budget? It's probably one of the key things. I can definitely help you with the narrative, you know, the narrative of the application.
Okay, I think that'd be really helpful. So I saw that Chris had put in the chat that it took the EDC roughly six months to find and hire a qualified candidate for their executive director position. And I, I would agree with her that I think that that timeframe is not anything that's unrealistic at this point. And I think that, I think that the hiring has to be done a little bit differently than other, other positions, Christie, correct? We would have to appoint this person. And so the interview process, would, would it need to be open to the public, like, public meeting type of thing?
There are portions of that, yes.
Okay. So I think we'd want to really work with HR and legal on that about what the hiring process would look like, um, for this.
And, um, Christie, you said in the meantime, waiting, I think I understood this to be your comment, waiting for a word on whether or not we get awarded, uh, the funding from DOL, we can work on job descriptions. And I'm sorry, did you say we can post that and start collecting applications or no?
So I would suggest that between now and the end of the year is when we keep working on the job description, what the organizational chart looks like, um, for you all. And the job description is going to be obviously huge, um, to start recruiting. And I, um, I don't see that there's anything wrong with posting for the job prior to knowing, um, your award, if you're awarded, um, because I...
The, the one thing I guess, just, and I'm not necessarily pushing for that. I think we probably will have, I mean, I, I think that the timeline of getting something ready to post maybe at the beginning of the year makes a lot of sense. And/or, um, of course, the election coming up and potentially to, you know, to, to commissioner seats being on the ballot, uh, we should probably get, um, the, some of the folks, uh, incorporated into the process, uh, you know, depending on, on how the election goes in November. So, um, yeah, just throwing that out there.
I, I think that we can use this time not necessarily to post a job, but to start to put the chain, the train on the tracks of redirecting the organization to this model of governance. So I mean, you know, having those meetings with elected officials and directors about what this is going to look like, how that organizational chart is going to, to shake out, um, and that type of thing in the meantime. And then I think as a board, we would need to make a decision going through the budget process, whether this is something we feel comfortable with going forward regardless of potential DOL funding or not. Christie, I don't know if you, if you think that that's reasonable for us to, to put in our application or?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I, I think there's just a lot of planning that goes along with having a, a new position at this level. So, um, yeah, I think that's a completely appropriate, uh, path forward. Yep.
And hi Denise.
Hello.
I agree with what both Sarah and Kayla are proposing. We've already been going through the process internally on, uh, reorganizing and, uh, making sure that the, the, the flow chart, if you, for lack of a better term, is being reviewed for the efficiencies, um, for the future of Lake County. So, uh, folks here on the workforce are already seeing and experiencing that. So I think that this is just the next right step.
Chris, um, I am curious about working with legal to prepare for this. I don't know if we need to, and Christie, you might be able to answer this. Would we need to pass a resolution or, or something like that prior to hiring a manager? To, to create that appointment?
I'm not sure. You've asked me that before and, um, it seems like you would have something already in your organizational structure if you've had a manager before. But I don't know. I, I thought that I had looked that up, but now I can't remember. So I will write that note down again.
Yeah, and this is Chris. I was gonna essentially say it'd be good to revisit what process was used with the last hire, but also think for transparency and such. At some point, obviously, I think you would need to, the P O C C would need to, um, adopt a, a new policy, if you will, or, or procedure for this hire. But I don't think you necessarily need to do that this far in advance. I think it would be more of once you get to the point where you've made the application for the funding and such, then to approve, accepting the funding to create this position and, and that type of thing. So I think that a lot of the work you'll do between now and then will be preparing the organization for this new model, and that's all internal work. I, I don't think you need to actually adopt any formal resolution to start down that path.
Okay. That, that's just kind of what I was curious about. And I think it might be, um, valuable for us to pull. I know that they did it by resolution the last time, and so we might want to pull that just to see what it had in it. And I think, I think, you know, going into 2021, like we've redone that, uh, board roles and appointments type of thing. And that might be a, a place where we can think about that because it kind of sets the tone for our organizational structure.
Well, and I also think too, part of this that, that will make it somewhat transparent and public in that regard will be your budget process. You know, when you, if you're going to actually make it a part of the process to allocate, allocate funding, uh, for the position, um, then, then that'll be, you know, part of the public process, I think, as well. If you're, you're going to share any of the new position information, uh, before that decision is made and when you adopt the, the budget, obviously.
Budget message, yep.
So, so the last time we did this, it, it turned into something quite political, because I think there's an expectation that the, the elected officials are elected to manage departments. Chris and Christie, um, and Sarah, what's, what's your take on, on the political piece to make this successful? Because I think that that was kind of part of, part of the failure as well last time is that it, it turned out to be so political that, you know, the, there wasn't community buy-in either to understand how this was going to add to the effectiveness of their local government.
I think, Kayla, the, uh, you know, part of, um, something that also has been highlighted through COVID and has been, I mean, something that we've talked about a lot too, is that communication piece and that outreach and educating the public on services, roles, you know, effectiveness. And I think that that's just a matter, again, I feel pretty confident moving forward with the development of, um, the board and interest in running for these elected positions that this is, this is something that, and this is a piece that we need to reiterate internally with directors and whatnot, but continuing to be that, uh, microphone and send that message out community-wide of, um, of the structure and the flow chart and, and, and in a way, of course, that relates to who you're speaking with and, and, and is of value, uh, to, to your audience. But I think that that's, you know, I, I mean, I, I try to integrate that in the conversations that I have both with staff and departments and, um, with community members. I also thought that you were going, uh, towards, um, some of the challenges of, of this internal strife that was created of accusations of board members wanting to apply for those positions. And I think in the, I mean, even in the conversation today, to me, it's clear that we are, we are looking for professionals. Neither Kayla nor I are professionals in that. And, um, and, you know, to thwart that, that can be a conversation, uh, with the board to, to include something maybe in a resolution or at least, you know, as a, as a public, um, acknowledgement in a meeting. You know, perhaps we consider posting this with the caveat that no board member intends to apply for this position and we can just shut that down because we do not need that kind of, uh, internal turmoil, uh, flying, um, as it, as it has happened in the past. It's, it's not, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was absolutely agree, but, but I also would suggest that maybe part of it is, um, you know, rolling this out in bits and pieces and using the budget message as to why you're creating this position and emphasizing the pros of what this position will do as part of that process. And part of it is to take it out of the political realm, you know? So you don't have any inference that any of the commissioners are making decisions on behalf of their departments or any, you know, the elected official on behalf of their departments and stuff, uh, based on any type of partisan politic, you know, agenda or anything like that. So I think that's where you start, is you start educating the public as to the value of this position and why you're doing it. And Sarah, I agree, the notion that it, it probably would help a lot to, to put it out there that no one who's a commissioner plans to, to apply for this. Now, the other side to it too is it, the hiring process for this will, you know, go over into 2021. And as Sarah pointed out, you have two commissioner positions up for election during that time. And so I think, you know, obviously, part of that decision-making process may need to involve whoever is put in, you know, elected into those positions.
Yeah. I would agree. Yeah, and I think, go ahead Lori.
The, the comment I wanted to make is that keeping the board out of the limelight of this and having me the front lines, uh, face to the recruitment process, I think will help buffer some of that political, uh, activities. But, um, I do question putting it out there that the board is not going to apply because it may trigger in people's minds, oh yeah, uh, this was political last time. I think maybe addressing it if it arises.
Yeah, I would agree Lori. I think being tactical about that, that PR piece of it. And I see that Beth is on the line, um, and so I don't know from a PIO perspective what that looks like.
And I think, this is Christie, and I think that maybe part of it, um, even if it was hard to hear Sarah or it, you know, it's a difficult message to, to get from your community, taking advantage of the situation right now where there is, um, um, a, a thought that there was miscommunication or whatever, you know, through the, the COVID response, maybe just owning that and saying, you know, we care you. We as an organization are committed to responding to the community and to being, um, you know, accountable. And in order to do that, we need to, um, make some improvements to our organization. And it's important that the community is here to support that. Um, but really talk about organizationally how important it is, um, for you all to, to be, you know, looking at, at things like this.
Right, and, and I totally agree. And I totally think, you know, like to Beth's point, this can totally be part of the messaging process of, you know, we cannot be players on a regional level as board members, but then to be expected to deal with the day-to-day that's happening as well through the pandemic. And we cannot provide the level of support that we're responsible for from the state level and regional level to like our public health department to say, here's the trends that are happening, here's where we want to direct ourselves or insert ourselves into these conversations. If our plates are so full with the day-to-day actionary items, we're, we're really doing a disservice to our community by not being a part of that conversation.
Yeah, I think, um, I don't, I, I mean, I certainly, to your point Christie, to, took that as a, you know, let's take advantage of, um, the light bulb that seems to have gone off, um, both in the community and, uh, in the organization. So I think, I think that it's not, yeah, it's something to embrace, um, with that feedback and, and enhance and address. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. So I think we're feeling pretty comfortable with at least starting the ball, rolling and going forward with, with some of this work. So I can work with Christie to work on the application process. And, and maybe we can have some brainstorming sessions with, um, HR and PIO and finance to talk this through the budget process and, and messaging type of thing. Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, to Beth's point of not being bogged down in the, in the daily operational weeds, you know, that, that puts us on the, on the menu, not at the table, right? So we've got to, we've got to get off the menu and be at the table.
Well, I, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Marcel, if you want to work with Christie to understand what that application looks like, some elements, and then we can, like you said, organize, um, those conversations to, to develop a, a competitive application.
Yes. And I think it's early enough in the game that we can, we can work on that application and at least have a work session so that we're all on the same page about the information that we're submitting on the application. So I can, I can at least pull it and get it started with Christie. And then we can work together as a board to make sure that that's an accurate reflection of what, what we want to submit.
Sounds good. Thanks for taking the time Christie and Denise to, to join us this morning. Sounds good. Thanks for taking the time, Christie and Denise, to, to join us this morning.
Yeah, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And we appreciate your support. And I feel really comfortable um, going through this process knowing that, you know, we have, we have such a strong backbone with you guys to help us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Just let me know what you need from, from me in the interim. Um, it, if you want me to reach out to um, the Colorado Association of County Administrators, which is not what ACHA stands for, but I can't put all of the letters together in the right order, um, to get job descriptions. Uh, we can do that. Um, I know you guys worked on a salary survey. Um, but if you need um, any other salary information from counties um, in the state, we can, we can do that as well for your discussions.
Yeah, why don't we collect, um, I mean, I, yeah, if, if you have some specific thoughts on job descriptions and have some to share, that'd be great.
I think that'd be awesome.
I will work on gathering that up um, and get something to you in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Christie, I'll connect with you after this um, to start with that application. Or Denise, to, to start with that application to find it um, through the portal.
Okay, that sounds good. I don't know, Denise, if we even have an old um, copy of a Word document. Because even if they make small changes to the application, I would think just having the, the big questions out there that um, Commissioner Marcela can start just kind of percolating on a little bit would help.
Yeah, I can try to find one. I feel like one was emailed out to us at some point before it being um, put on the website. So I maybe I'll define it in my email. So you could at least get the gist of the information.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you Denise. All right, so I think um, I think that's pretty much it today. Sarah, do you have anything else before we adjourn?
No, I think that was, that was great. And um, it sounds like we're on a good, good path forward.
Cool. I, I feel pretty comfortable with this too. So, all right. Well, thank you everyone for joining us today. I really appreciate it. I hope you all have a great day.
Thanks, you too.
Bye.